Begin this morning's meeting by asking Father Mike Scully of the St. Joseph Church to do the honor of the education. Good morning, Aloha.
Aloha. As this council gathers to make decisions for our community, may they use their best skills in judgment or keep themselves impartial and neutral, considering the expected merits of each matter placed before them, and they will act in accordance with what is best for our community and for our fellow citizens. We seek blessings on the tasks before them, lesser efforts but clear insight, their deliberation with wisdom, their work with clarity and accuracy in their decisions and impartiality. They assist through one greater than ourselves. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. Okay, I'm going to be calling the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, if you could please do the roll call. Ms. Yehaw?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Iligan?
Present.
Mr. Canova?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Anishi?
He's excused.
Ms. Poindexter?
Excused.
Ms. Willie?
Here.
Chair Shimono?
Here.
Chair Shimono, you have seven members present. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So for the public information, Mr. Anishi and Ms. Poindexter are traveling and therefore are excused from today's meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Willie if you can do us the honor of the leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
... for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. For members of the public and council members, please remember to turn your cell phones, tigers, and other mobile communication devices on silent mode. This time, I would like to make an announcement. This morning, we had the pleasure of having students enrolled at Patsy Usaki's University of Hawaii Communication Department's Advanced Media Writing Class. They're here this morning to observe us. If you could stand and be recognized? This is Patsy right here. Hi, Patsy.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us this morning. Just basically, for the council members know, this is a class that continues to prepare students for media communication field with news writing and reporting on an advanced level. Since this course focuses on community engagement and real-life applied learning experiences, one of their mandatory assignments includes covering the Hawaii County Council meeting or committee meetings. All assignments, including this county council meeting, requires credible live face-to-face and physical and online sources, so council members and members of the public, they may be very interested in interacting with you, so we'd be appreciative of any input and help to keep them there. Thank you. Okay, let's check in with our various sites. We're going to be taking statements from the public on agenda items. So here in Hilo, just to let everyone know, we have approximately eight people signed up so far. I see more signing up, and let's check in with their various sites. Dave is my man. Good morning, how are we doing?
Good morning, Chair. We do not have any testifiers for council this morning.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And Scott in Kona, good morning, how are we doing there?
Good morning, Chair. Yeah, we don't have any testifiers for your council today, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Fortune in Kahului, how are we doing there?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We have no testifiers here, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fortune. Okay, so let's, and just for the public's information, Pohoa side is still down, but we'll be getting that up by the next meeting. We'll have a temporary sign up. Okay, so let's start with our first two testifiers here in Hilo, Ms. Corey Harden and Toby Hazel. If you can both please come to the table. Ms. Harden will be testifying in support of Bill 129 Draft Two. Good morning. I'm going to be ready, Ms. Harden.
Good morning, Corey Harden, speaking for myself in support of Bill 129 to ban fracking. I really appreciate the council stepping up to the plate on yet another issue where federal and state officials have really failed to protect the public. Earlier this year, as you know, our state legislature considered but did not pass a bill to ban fracking, and our State Department of Land and Natural Resources testified against the bill. They were saying existing regulations that assign oversight to DLNR and the State Department of Health would be sufficient, but many people on this island who live with geothermal would not agree. The Alter Rock Geothermal Project in Oregon involves very different geology, but it raises many concerns that could apply to Hawaii. The Alter Rock Environmental Assessment said chemicals would be added to the fracking water. Some of the chemicals are proprietary, so the public couldn't find out what they were. Ratios of chemicals to water were proposed to be as high as one part chemical to 100 parts water, but then there might be multiple chemicals, so the final ratio of all the chemicals to water could be much higher. And I don't know if the synergistic effects of all the chemicals interacting with each other was evaluated. An Oregon doctor commenting on the EA said the proposed use of chemicals was not revealed in public meetings or written information or the news until after the EA came out. And the proposed water use was huge. For some phases, it would be over 1 million gallons in one day, and the water was to be under pressure, and we need to remember that PGV had a piping failure on an injection well a year ago, even without pressurized fracking water. The Alter Rock fracking was designed to make rocks move underground, and that sounds way too much like an earthquake for me. The threat of heavy industry and residential neighborhoods is bad enough just from geothermal. The last thing we need is the additional threat from fracking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hazel, you're testifying on a couple of matters, Bill 126 and 129. Good morning. Okay, there you go.
Good morning. I just want to say that I'm very disappointed that I couldn't roll out of bed and testify in Pohoa, so I'm hoping that our council people will understand that they need to have the vision to have this written before they shut down their office, not make us wait for so long to have this. I want to say something about Bill 126 that I happen to notice. Do you know how bad this food is? I don't know why the county is giving money to companies that are bringing dead thing, dead food from the mainland to serve to seniors. I mean, I spoke to someone the other day who said he called from his farm to try to give fresh food to the seniors. He never even got a call back from the nutrition office. We really can do so much better than this, than to waste this money with dead fish sticks or whatever it is that's being served there. And so many people will not go to these lunches because they simply can't eat this kind of food. I don't know, in Pohoa, there's probably about a dozen people plus a few county workers who eat these lunches. I wish somebody would get together with Joan and whoever it is that runs this whole mess from Honolulu and try to fix it and spend the money wisely. The other thing has to do, and also Kohala Center came and talked to us and it seems they've made some headway with schools and children and fresh food, but us seniors still got left this kick to the curb or something. And of course, we do not want fracking, but I will say that if you do not have the backbone to pass this, that, you know, we really want to know when this drilling or fracking is going to happen. I want to leave. I don't want to be here. I was sick when that other well was drilled a year ago, March, and I want enough time to leave. I just, I can't take these kind of health assaults. You know, I was having dizzy spells for a whole month before I figured out, you know, that they had started drilling that well. So to pass this bill, I mean, it saves our health, it saves our home values, and really our lives, since we don't really have a health study on what the long-term effects are going to be for this. It seems like solar is gaining a lot of ground. Let's just let that happen. What is so hard about this? Most of the people that are going to make money from this fracking, I don't think they even live here. And I don't know about, I know, I just missed the march to Hilo, to the Helco Center, but I have to commend all those people that were willing, you know, to make that long journey from Puna, you know, into the Hilo office, to make it very clear, you know, how they feel about it. So please, please remember, and I'm saying, you know, if you can't, if you can't find that backbone to stop this, then drilling timetables, well numbers, a map, company names in the newspaper in the way three weeks before, so I can get my plane ticket, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hazel. Our next two testifiers here in Hilo is John Olson and Tracy Matkin, if you can both come to the table. And Kahului, Fortune, you have one testifier?
Yes, I have one testifier, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll take that testifier right after the next two testifiers here in Hilo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Olson is testifying here in support of Bill 129 Draft Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. First, I'd like to thank you for taking this up and applying to it the seriousness with which I certainly feel the matter deserves. I don't think that there is anything that has come before you in recent time that could have a level of negative impact to our water resources that fracking here could. The potential, just in every dimension, outweighs any possible benefit that we could get from this. So I hope this sails through, and I hope we're beyond that prepared to defend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Our next testifier is Tracy Matkin, testifying on Bill 129 Draft Two in support. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Matkin, and I'm here representing myself as well as La Akeha Community LLC.
Can you bring the mic a little bit closer?
Is that better?
Yeah, you can start. Go ahead. So reset your time. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm here representing myself as well as La Akeha Community LLC. I am here because fracking is hydraulic fracturing. We have documents, document, sorry, I'm really nervous.
Okay.
I'll never eat, that one would work better. I want to appreciate the council's recognition on this issue. It's a very serious matter. We have lots of documentation that hydraulic fracturing can pollute groundwater, and I live on a farm that is surrounded by areas that are potential sites for this happening. We do not have a well, however, those of us in the area that do will be adversely affected, and that's just on the local side. We grow food, we're working on how to grow more food on the Big Island to increase sustainability for everyone, and not only is it an issue for us, but the tourist industry could be completely demolished as the oceans are polluted by the groundwater that leaks out to the ocean and the fish die. There's very little reason to do it, to allow it, and tremendous reasons not to, just like you, to think about this island and the Ina and the land and what kind of destruction that can do to that. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, I'd like to call the next two testifiers to the table, although we'll be taking Kahului next, Mahalay Ferguson and Paul Kikekendall, if you could please come to the table. Fortune, why don't you go ahead with your first testifier?
Thank you. We have Joanne O'Donnell and Anna Towner.
Shupsena? Yeah. Aloha. Am I on?
Yes, aloha. A'wai'au.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you for having me here to be able to testify. I am against the bills 124, 125, 114, 115, and 64, the second draft. The reason why is, first of all, our federal government is in such an deficit, we should not be asking for more funds from them to take care of Hawaii, not at this time. Our police department has been doing quite a good job on its own. It's helped with the alcohol abuse. It has done many good things. At this time, I don't think we should also put a burden on our state finances. As far as the invasive species, I consider that's a DLNR job. I do not think that our mayor should be used to do the work of the DLNR. So that's all I've got to say. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Anna Towner, and I just moved into the area about three months ago, and I'm speaking against the fracking, Bill 129. The risk of fracking is so high, aside from the contamination, it also tends to lead to more earthquakes. You can check with some of the data that's on the mainland, and I would just like to know, who would like to live closest to the fracking centers, and will a nuclear plant be next? Look at Japan for what's been happening there. So I strongly suggest that we resist and strongly oppose any installation of a fracking system in Hawaii. It would ruin what we moved here for. I'm with the lady. Let me know two weeks ahead of time, and then we can move again. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. For your testimony. Okay, we're going to transition back here to Hilo. Our first, our next testifier is Mr. Ferguson, and he'll be testifying on Bill 129, 112, and 64. Let us know when you transition. You have three minutes each. Good morning, aloha.
One more time. Ms. Faver?
Yep. Good morning, council. I'm Mahalay Ferguson. I'm the spokesperson for Na Kukunamoku Piaui. I have several comments I'd like to make. My first one is on Bill 129, and it's to support the anti-fracking initiative. I think there's, you've heard a lot of testimony in this, and I testified several weeks ago on the same matter, reading to use of geography, but another feature that came into light was the global warming problem caused by CO2 emissions, and Hawaii is already known to be a very big contributor to that because of our natural volcanic activity, but geothermal fracking is going to increase that tremendously. And of course, most of the CO2 is sequestered into the ocean, but it also causes ocean warming, which will destroy reefs, so just as an added factor. I know you have many, many testimonies giving you other outlines, so I'll just pass on that one. But I am in support of that bill. The second one I had was Bill 112, and that's the rezoning of Puhapu. I'm very concerned about that, changing it from a five-acre to two-acre agricultural lots. And the reason why I'm very concerned about that is, I was raised in Waimea. Waimea's got like 26 feet of topsoil. It's absolutely insane that we keep covering our best and most potentially useful farmlands by urbanizing it, and of course, you change zoning like that, it's good. We're fighting for the organization. Okay, so I'm switching to the next one, and that's Bill 64. That's the one, I think, I think that's kind of fashioned after the Kawamoto Bill in Honolulu, the clearing of property. I myself think that's very ambiguous. It's a very slippery slope. I don't think it's been given a lot of thought as to, according to who is that site moving beyond sightly? What areas? I mean, I could certainly understand if it was in a clearly developed area and we had some place that was not meeting up to some kind of standard, but we live in a very rural area out here, and a good way to start moving people out of that area would be to start zoning them out or pricing them out, saying that you don't come up to a standard for $1 million house that was next to you. Anyway, I'm just, I just say, I just wanted to let you know that I think it's a very slippery slope, and I think it's very ambiguous. My third one was, oh, that was my first. Another one was on Bill 127, which has to do with a culprit, change on a lead drive. I have a lot of concerns about that. Everybody wants to see things done correctly, and I also, but I also do know that lead drives, the entire lead drive is built on a barrel case, and so I'm very, very concerned about any further movement of earth in that area that may expose Hawaiian barrels. I think I've had it.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Okay. Okay, our next testifier is Mr. Kikekendall. He will be testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Kikekendall, and I'd like to begin by saying mahalo to the council for filling the void that was left by the state deciding to eliminate all permitting at the county level for geothermal power. This is one small step, but it's an important step for those of us who actually are going to be here, no matter what happens. So we're not going to leave. We're going to stay, and we're going to do everything we can to protect the other citizens of Hawaii and the Ina from corporations that are coming in with a profit motive and not really paying attention to what's happening at the ground level, to the plants, the land, and the people. I'd also like to thank the council for the amendment that increased penalties with this bill, because it makes it relevant to the scale of the businesses that are going to be coming in. It's much better than a $1,000 fine to a company who can make millions by creating a reservoir and that allows them to put a power line online. I'd also like it to keep in mind that Puna produces about 30% of the energy on the Big Island and only uses 6%. PGV produces about 20%, the power plant in Keau produces another 10, and so I'm off grid. It feels as if Puna has done their part in providing power to the rest of the island, and please do what you can to protect our way of life, which is really about living on the land and growing our own food and food for others in our community. So very briefly, this bill will protect us from the water use, from geothermal fracking. One project in Oregon used 122 million gallons of water over a two-year period. It'll protect us from water contamination from both the chemicals and also the brine. Brine is toxic, which gets into the aquifer. It'll protect us from earthquakes. The Swiss shut down a geothermal fracking operation. They caused $9 million worth of damage due to fracking, and it will protect us from the social, economic, and cultural impact to our community. So I thank you for your work, and please pass this bill so we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kikekendall. Okay, our next two testifiers in Hilo, if you can please come to the table, Suzanne Wakeland and Ramon Pelton. And after that, we'll be Terrence Rura and Tom Strass. Good morning, Ms. Wakeland.
Good morning. Aloha, Kaku. My name's Suzanne Wakeland, and first I want to say I appreciate the council for hearing this bill. I did testify during the committee meetings, and for those of you who perhaps did not get the information that I know a lot of people share, we have been receiving some criticism because the idea of fracking is not seen as relevant to Hawaii. Now, obviously, right here, it is relevant, and it's clearly recognized that enhanced geothermal systems have a lot of similarities with the fracking that's been going on in the mainland, and we do know that there are plans to do, use these technologies. Couple of documents that have been released by the Hawaii Renewable Energy Development Venture and the Pacific International Center on High Technology Research, they talk explicitly about using enhanced geothermal systems. So when we're hearing from other places that, no, there's no plans to use fracking in Hawaii, there's no companies who said they'll do it, that's true, that maybe they haven't been saying so, but with some foresight, which I recognize from Council Number Four, we're bringing this forward, it's actually seen as important. There is a, US Congress directed the US Department of Energy a couple of years ago to get the National Research Council to look into the issue of induced seismicity with energy systems, and just this year, a couple of months ago, the National Academy of Sciences issued a report called "The Induced Seismicity Potential in Energy Technologies," and they outline seismicity that occurred in a number of states, Alabama, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Illinois, Louisiana, Mississippi, Nebraska, New Mexico, Ohio, Oklahoma, Texas. No mention of Hawaii yet, but since Hawaii has some very specific geology, we are very concerned about the fact that induced seismicity can have much more significant consequences for us too, because we're sitting on a volcano. Anyway, I would like to encourage you to vote to support this bill. I think it's very important, and I appreciate all of you who have the awareness to recognize this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Mr. Pelton, you're also testifying on Bill 129. Good morning, aloha.
Yes, thank you. I want to comment from a more common sense point of view. I really appreciate all the scientific evidence.
Mr. Pelton, if you could just say your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Laymon Pelton, and I represent myself and my company, EcoTrust, Real Concepts. Okay, so in a common sense way, and I have some knowledge of volcanoes. If you could just view the volcano as layers upon layers upon layers of, that were produced independently, and each layer, when it cools, it cracks. So those cracks are independent of the next layer. As the layers pile up on each other, all the cracking is independent. The only thing that connects them is earthquakes. So with geothermal, if you're drilling six-inch holes or something, it's like removing blood from your body. It's, it's bad, but I look at it as bad geog, geog, geographically, but fracking is a whole different world. Now, it's, it's like a seismic event, you're connecting the layers, so to speak, you're cracking in, you have the technology, that doesn't mean you should use it, especially you have to consider the geology specific to an area. So what you're doing is connecting all the cracks to the different layers. Now, this, this opens up, if you looked at the planet and the thickness of the layer that separates us from the magma reservoir underneath us, it's very thin, and it's very fragile. So fracking is complete insanity in my common sense point of view and from what I know about the volcano. And there's no, nobody understands what the consequences would be. I'd have to compare this with Fukushima. Fukushima, it's like they piled up these nuclear reactors on each other in an area they considered to be safe. Because they had the technology, doesn't mean they should have done it. And then, when, after the tsunami, they did induce some seismic problems that cracked a 26-foot... a 26-foot-thick slab, which nobody could have guessed. So that's a poor use of technology, by inducing seismic events that really caused the problem that the tsunami didn't. Here, we are facing a similar thing. Our volcano is a lot, has a lot more energy than any nuclear device ever created by any being. We're sitting on such a huge pool of energy. We have to take responsibility. The state isn't taking responsibility.
Please summarize.
It's up to the county now to use our best judgment to move forward, and I strongly suggest that we stand behind this wonderful bill by Brittany Smart, and for the protection, health, and safety of our community, which you're responsible for, that we make ours our best judgment in protecting us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pelton. That's Brenda Ford, by the way. Okay, Brenda Ford.
Thank you.
Our next two testifiers, Mr. Brewer and Mr. Travis, and they can ask both to come to the table. Derek Brewer will be testifying on Bill 129, and Thomas Travis will also be testifying in the same matter, both in support. Mr. Brewer, you're first. Good morning, Aloha.
Good morning. My name is Derek Brewer, and myself. I spoke last time in committee about some things that have already been spoken today, the proprietary chemicals, the accumulation, and where does these chemicals go? Even if they do not go into the groundwater, they're still going into the ocean or the land at some location. They don't just magically disappear. So even over a longer period of time, these chemicals that they say are at low levels will increase in the amount of levels that exist. So even if they are healthy theoretically at a one level, given a year, two years, three years, those may not be healthy anymore. The seismic activity is obviously a big risk there, inducing any sort of earthquakes or minor shifts in the crust or land is going to have a whole bunch of unknown consequences. Basically, this is some of the same reasons that we're worried about the health of anything else. You bring chemicals into it, you bring earthquakes into it, what are we doing to land? What are we doing to our home here? And so we need to keep our land safe, we need to keep our home safe, and this is a preventative measure. This is, once again, the precautionary principle. There's no need to be doing that, just because we do have this technology, as I said, we don't have to use it. There is no need, there is no urgent need for that, and we should definitely be concerned about horizontal drilling and some of the other things that can be done with this. I believe last time it was mentioned that there would be an amendment to make sure that the offshore water was included in that. I'm not sure if that's been added in there, but that is a huge part as well, just because if it's on the land or off in the oceans, the same risks are available there. And so I think everyone had kind of already said the things that I wish to say there. So proprietary chemicals, low levels of dilution, it does not mean that it is safe, just because it is one per 100, as previously stated, that's just for one chemical. And what are these chemicals that are being used? If they do not have to be released to us, that is a huge public safety health risk. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Our next testifier is Mr. Travis.
Hello, council. Thank you for Bill 129. My name is Tom Travis. I live in Puna. I think Bill 129 is a forward-looking bill that protects the entire island, not just Puna. If you understand enhanced geothermal systems, it allows drilling and development of geothermal resources throughout the island and in some places that may be even more risky than it is in Puna. There are three risks from fracking that I would like to speak of. There are others, but three I'd like to speak of. One is earthquakes. An effort in Basel, Switzerland, several years ago, was terminated when earthquakes caused a $9 million damage. A New York Times investigating report questioned whether industry had been honest about what the risks were. Germany stopped development on several geothermal plants over concerns with earthquakes shortly thereafter. And finally, a fracking effort at Geysers in California was terminated after the Basel. Just for your information, near Middleton, California, as of about a year ago, 19 damage claims from small earthquakes had been settled between the company that was doing the geothermal fracking and the community. So there is really little doubt that there is a risk of earthquakes. However, the situation's more serious than that in that the earthquakes that are caused, that we're describing earthquakes caused by the fracturing and are a direct consequence of it. The indirect earthquakes are a greater danger, and in Oklahoma, Arkansas, and California, there's strong evidence that the fracking has set up geologic conditions that have triggered larger earthquakes. This is particularly important in Hawaii, where our, have tremendous potential for large earthquakes, and to use and to set up geological conditions that could trigger those is very, very important. So instead of talking magnitude five earthquake, as was done in Switzerland, we could be talking magnitude seven, 7.9 earthquake that was triggered, and that's a very serious risk. There's also the issue of water use. Ultra Rock in Oregon used 24 million gallons in 21 days, is what they projected. And they project using 124 million gallons to support the project over 22 years. This is an enormous amount of water, and on, in many places in Hawaii, this would be a tremendous problem, is the use. Finally, there's water contamination. In some of the geothermal development, they monitor the induced earthquakes to determine which way the cracks are propagating.
Please summarize.
Okay, determine which way the cracks are propagating in a hope that they can stop, reduce the pressure in the reservoir, and stop the propagation of the cracks before it reaches the groundwater that we drink. I would, I very much appreciate you bringing this bill forward, and thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Travis. Our next two testifiers is Laura Travis and Russell Ruderman. Ms. Travis will be testifying also on Bill 129 in support. When you're ready, you can hit the button on the bottom.
Hi, my name's Laura Travis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I live in Puna, and I'm just really concerned about the issues, the negative issues that are associated with enhanced geothermal systems, that being the water use. Geothermal fracking uses over many times the water of oil or well fracking, and oil or well gas uses 3 to 8 million gallons in its lifetime. One geothermal well in Oregon will use 122 million gallons in two years. I'm also concerned about the water contamination, you know, that the fracking process can cause the vertical cracking and can contaminate the fresh water above the geothermal resource. Well blowouts unlikely, but common accidents can also contaminate drinking water. Earthquakes have shut down several geothermal projects, sometimes permanently, and the damage claims from earthquakes have been paid by other projects, and it takes up to several months for earthquakes to subside after the enhanced geothermal systems project. Last, the social and economic and cultural impact on the community, issues with truck and other traffic on narrow and busy roads, noise impact, creation of water shortages or degradation of water quality from overuse, unabated or abated release of hydrogen sulfide, a poisonous and foul-smelling gas, potential steam and chemical poons during flow testing, restricted access to public trails and paths, and the need for extensive road construction. So I strongly support the Bill 129. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier is Russell Ruderman, who will be testifying on two matters, Bill 64 and Bill 129. Good morning. Hit the button on the table already.
Thank you, council members. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name's Russell Ruderman, and I'm representing myself. I wanted to testify on Bill 129 regarding fracking, and I wanted to thank you all for bringing this bill forward. I did provide written testimony as well as some previous testimonies, so I'll be very brief. By the way, I'll, me and Paul and a few others are going to stay here whether any fracks or not, so if anyone thinks you're going to get me to move away by allowing fracking, it's not going to work. Fracking as part of enhanced geothermal system is being considered by some of the potential geothermal developers, and I'm here to vouch for that fact. Some people say this bill is not needed because fracking won't be done in Hawaii for various reasons. But I would ask you to consider this. What if we aren't perfect, and what if we make a mistake? What are the consequences of those mistakes? What if we ban fracking and it turns out to not be needed? What's the consequence of that? Or what if we fail to ban it, and it happens and pollutes our groundwater and increases our earthquakes? So my simple request is let's err on the side of caution. Banning fracking protects our groundwater, protects our geology, it has no downside, it has great benefit, it has no cost. So I urge you to pass this ban. It seems to have unanimous support among the actual people who live here, and I really appreciate you considering this. And I'd like to also comment on Bill 64, if I may. That's the one relating to hazardous fauna, if I have the name correct. I also appreciate you, council member, bringing forward this bill. I'm happy to say for me, the most relevant hazardous fauna is albizia trees, of which I'm happy to say we're finally beginning to address that problem, which is actually a statewide problem. I have organized a demonstration, I have helped to organize a demonstration project that's going to happen. The first one will be in Black Sand subdivision area. And this is a project that is bringing together many, many, many stakeholders, each of who spend a lot of time and effort fighting albizia on their own. And we're trying to instigate a sort of comprehensive approach to deal with one area once and for all, instead of always going back and cutting the same albizia trees every year. This project has garnered the support of the State Department of Transportation, the County Department of Public Works, HELCO, Hawaii Invasive Species Council, Big Island Invasive Species Council, the United States Division of Forestry, the State Forestry Division, and last but not least, the community members involved. And in this example, we're using community volunteer labor primarily to do, as well as the very valuable help from people like HELCO and the Public Works. To address an area of albizia infestation as a whole, instead of just cutting back the ones by the side of the road, we're going to get rid of the seed sources that keep replenishing it over here. And we hope that this will be a model that can be replicated in other communities. Bill 64 is a crucial tool in that effort because it allows, it allows access, at least in some instances, to private property where albizia is a hazard. And I want to say that it's a hazard not just in the obvious ways where it overhangs a house or a power line, but it also, it actually disrupts underground water pipes and things like that. It's a very damaging tree to our environment, and I'm really happy that we're finally beginning to address it. We will never eradicate albizia, but we just hope to control it and to control its spread. And Bill 64 is a crucial tool in that arsenal, and I hope you'll support that as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Mr. Ruderman, council members were asking if you're going to be available for any questioning when it comes up. We do have about at least 10 more testifiers.
I can be here till 10:45.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next two testifiers, Joy Cash and Dave Kaiser. Could you please come to the table? Mrs. Cash will be testifying on Bill 129 in support, and Mr. Kaiser will also be testifying in the same matter, also in support.
Good morning. I want to thank the council for bringing this forward and taking responsibility. And I just want to say that, you know, in these times, we can't wait for the federal government and the state government to protect us. Their systems seem to be broken, and I like to think at the local level, we're not that broken, but we still are close to the people and their needs. So I want to thank you all, each of you, for the effort you bring forth for us. Thank you for that. And I have a question for each of you. Did you receive the information about my friend Eleanor Robbins, PhD in geology?
Yeah, that was submitted as testimony.
I submitted it to the county clerk, and he said, I asked him to give it to each of you.
Yeah, we'll check with the clerk.
Okay. So, and she and I are both very concerned because we are from San Diego, and San Diego is an earthquake zone as well. And I just missed the big one here, and was it 206? And the cost of that to our county and state was enormous, I understand. And so if we can avoid that, I mean, we have better things to do with our money, really, in my view. And so please contact her, that's an expert witness. I call her Nori because she's your friends, but it's Eleanor Robbins, and she's had over 30-some years' experience in the field all over the world. And I've recently communicated with her and asked her to talk to people up at the volcano because they have real immediate data regarding earthquakes in our geology here and the university here as well, so that she can speak to her peers here on the island and bring forth some really good data for you all to consider. So I, you know, I'm just concerned that we, you know, we're all concerned about the water. We all drink water, and we don't want the devastation. I mean, we just had in 206, an inkling of what can happen. And, you know, it's already been mentioned about Fukushima. And also, you know, you know, I'm not one of these ludites, if you know what a ludite is. I'm not anti-technology, but I'm a person that wants to be very thoughtful in the application of technology for the benefit of all people, not just a small elite group that's main focus is profit at any cost. And we have so many examples today across the board. So if we can avoid that, I think it's our opportunity to do so. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier is Dave Kaiser, who will also be testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for staging this bill. We sure appreciate it. So I'm also here in supporting and I'm representing my cat, Thunderball. He can't be here to meow his sport. Well, anyway, I have a sneaking suspicion. You've heard the word earthquakes often enough to know that they're an issue. I'll just mention the fracking law would do is just increase their intensity and severity. That's it on earthquakes. Industry has a tendency to believe that they know everything about what's going on. I've seen them pull some stunts that they didn't realize what was going to happen later on. There was fracking done in Wyoming for yellowcake uranium. Now, there was a ring of 22 monitoring wells. The ranchers were assured that the water would remain where they were told it would be. EPA assured them, everybody assured them. Evidently, nobody told the water what it was supposed to do, and it missed all of the wells, every single one. And all those poor ranchers are sweating bullets, worried that they're going to have radioactive water. That's just how industry works. They just forge ahead. Oh, and Bayou Corn is another one. Always remember how that's the city, little town in Louisiana that has been, had its underpinnings pulled, and it's been sinking and growing, you know, the hole is just growing. So that's what, that's kind of like, well, they said, you know, nature is not obligated to comply with the wills and wishes of industry, but we really don't know what could happen. And, well, like I said, I wanted to mention earthquakes, but, you know, that will be the prime result. to comply with the wills and wishes of industry, but we really don't know what could happen. And, well, like I said, I wanted to mention earthquakes, but, you know, that will be the prime result. And, well, we've got, thanks to, well, we have the state that pretty much supports the geothermal industry, thanks, and with, you know, with Act 97, which pretty much gives us that. So the entire state is susceptible to this, but right now, we're only concerned primarily with our island. But evidently, when they start to get to frack, if it does happen, they're going to start wondering what's happening and, well, they can't say we didn't warn them. Now, again, thanks for sponsoring this bill and appreciate it. Might as well pull chocks and roll out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Oh, and by the way, yeah, you can see this.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Our next two testifiers is Donna Fisher and Ray Dittman. Both are testifying on Bill 129 in support. Morning, all. Ms. Fisher, you're first. When you're ready, you can head up in on the bottom of the floor.
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. My name is Donna Fisher and I'm here in support of Bill 129. Every day, I am bombarded by the media by, with the ill effects of fracking. I think anyone who is awake knows the ill effects of fracking. So it comes down to, are we governed by a government that is supporting and protecting the people or supporting and protecting the corporations? And that's all I have to say. I thank you so much for bringing this bill forward because it shows me that we are in your hearts.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay, our next testifier is Ray Dittman, also testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ray Dittman and I'm here to support 129 and ban fracking on this island. I've heard everything that is, I was going to say, so I won't take my full time, I'm sure, but I just want to say that I'm very glad you brought this bill forward. It's time for us to protect our own backyards, our own farms. And it's obvious that the state and the business that want to do this have no idea what's going to happen or won't protect us, so it's up to us to say, stop. This is dangerous, stop. So I ask you all to pass this bill so that we can make a stand here and say, business can't just run over us and loot our life just for their money that they're going to run away with anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, our next two testifiers, Robert Patrici and Donna Willoughby. If I could ask people to please come to the table. Both are testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning, Mr. Patrici, you're up first.
Good morning, Jay. Aloha, council. My name's Robert Patrici, out here speaking for Puna Pono this morning. I want to thank you for hearing the bill, thank Brenda for introducing the bill, and I want to commend the community for being so well-educated on the subject and the testimony given to this council at both of these hearings has been very good. I think you can see that the community is paying attention and they are concerned about this. So, Puna Pono Alliance is going to be participating in the IRP process at the PUC, so we are very concerned about all of this and we are trying to take an active role. We don't even need geothermal. You know, I want to educate you guys to that fact. I have a 10-acre farm and I'm putting in my second solar system now because I have a business there. I have nine people that live there. And the first system I bought, I bought in 1999 and I'm still using it, it runs my system, I mean, my whole farm. I just bought a new system, it's not quite hooked up yet, and I can't tell you how impressed I am in 14 years, the difference. That new system will run anything and it's cheap. I mean, it is not expensive. We could put some programs in place for the upfront costs and we don't need to frac, we don't need geothermal. This is all about making money. This is all about corporations, monopolies, controlling the energy, and people are getting hurt for that reason. So please pass this bill. We absolutely do not need to frac in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next testifier is Donna Willoughby and she'll be testifying in support of Bill 129. Good morning.
My name is Donna Willoughby and I represent myself and about 10 other people that would have been able to testify in Pahoa but couldn't take the time off work to get here. I live in Puna and like Robert, I live on a sustainable farm where we actually teach other people to be sustainable. Our water comes from the air, from the rain, so the contamination, I mean, who with any sense would think that you could put toxic chemicals into the earth and it's not going to spread? I have relatives that live in places where they frack and the wells are contaminated. The Ohio River is coming up with the chemicals from the fracking and yet there's somehow in the law system, a way to get around it, which is really scary. Let me see, I did spend 21 years in the US Navy. I'm a tree hugger and a service member who put time into this country. I want us all to protect nature. I just went to a Democracy Now! class and what I'm understanding is the system is no longer in favor of the people and nature. And I really appreciate all of you because while I'm a little podug citizen in Puna on a little sustainable farm, in a way, you're just this little council that has to stand up for our rights and I really appreciate all of you doing that. There's one other thing I did want to bring up from my friends and relatives who live where there's been fracking. If anybody is trying to sell you on the fact that there will be local jobs, I want you to know that hasn't happened there. It takes about two years to train the people that will be coming in to do the fracking. They'll most likely come without their families and it will change the locality and there's seems to be a lot of fighting going on because of that. Chances of them starting a school here and waiting two years to train people to do the fracking is not highly likely. And, let's see, the other thing I want to say is local energy. I'm not an energy expert, but I do try to read about it and it takes a lot of the energy to transport it to another place. So on our farm, where we have local energy right there, even if there's small local energy grids with solar, it makes more sense than trying to transport it long distances. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, our next two testifiers is Springer K. and Kenneth Peeler. If I could ask both to come to the table. Good morning. Ms. Peeler, whenever you're ready. Oh, try again, one more time. There you go.
My name is Springer K. I'm the manager of the Big Island Invasive Species Committee. I am testifying in support of Bill 64. I'd like to thank you very much for submitting this measure and supporting it. We believe it's a common sense measure that encourages good citizenship, including the concept that property owners do share in the responsibility of managing costs related to their properties. The Big Island Invasive Species Committee raises and spends over $1 million each year on this island, managing invasive species that harm our environment, our economy, or human health. Unsafe vegetation is often a threat to all three. Just last Thursday, BISC visited the Haas Charterstone in Pahoa and we gave a pretty dull presentation to a group of sleepy 7th and 8th graders, but when we got to albizia, the room completely came alive and this really surprised me. Every student in the room had an albizia story. There was a dog rescued from a small space between fallen branches, a 12-year-old boy who had nearly survived being trapped in the space between his bed and the wall when a whole tree fell on his house. There is an uncle who remains in a coma in a hospital. These are stories we thought might be out there, but really had no idea that there were so many and that our children are literally being terrorized by trees. The BISC staff, teachers, and students girdled more than 200 trees at the edge of that campus the next day. So following the passage of Bill 64, which we hope to see today, the Big Island Invasive Species Committee will announce an island-wide My Albizia Story contest to collect and publicize some of these stories. We're certain this bill is a big step forward to ensure there's a lot fewer of them in the future. In my previous testimony, I noted the cost to the county, state, and utilities of albizia maintenance. Albizia also has significant impact to our native forests with the ability to smother and kill 95% of all oheya trees in an invaded area. While Puna has the oldest and greatest problem, BISC has mapped albizia in every district, in urban and rural zones, from the coastline to the Maoka Forest Reserve boundary. We've determined that fully 50% of all land on our island is suitable albizia habitat. Very big, brittle trees are coming to a parcel near you soon. To the detractors of the bill, it was explained to me that the county code includes a clause for waivers in the case of undue hardship. Also, there exists an array of professional arborists on the island who are certified in risk assessment procedures and that there is a standard for that in the arborist industry. So we have a very clear standard that can be pointed to, to make sure that this bill is applied fairly and equitably. So thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, our next testifier is Mr. Peeler, testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning, all.
Aloha, morning. My name is Kenneth Peeler. I like to be called Super Kenny. I'm here representing Mother Earth. Also, I'd like to note that I'm a disabled veteran and I hurt my neck about 30 years ago, so sometimes I shake and I'm in pain and stuff. So this is very difficult, but it's also, to me, very important. Also, I'd like to point out, I consider you all the high chief. You are, I'm your loyal subject and the responsibilities that I've seen you go through in my short time here in Hawaii, I really respect you, I trust you. You know, at the end of the day and everything, I may not agree with what you come up with as your solutions and everything, but I honor your decisions. So, I'm also a scientist. I graduated from Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo as an electronics engineer technician. So I know a little bit about science and this and that. Excuse me. I'm not here to talk about technology. I'm here to talk about, excuse me, I'm here to talk about, I know a gentleman that is four generation, I can't mention his name because he doesn't know I'm speaking here and so that would be disrespectful, but he lives off the land, even in this day and age. Somehow, he doesn't buy stuff from the store to eat and through friends, family, and whatnot. He walks this island by foot and he has been up the mountain to the ocean everywhere. About six months ago, he was in Puna. And he goes places where I could not even follow him, let alone go by myself in some of the jungle that he goes through. He found a place that is not at the geothermal land, it's in a different area, miles away, and they're doing experimental drilling. He goes, how come we haven't heard about this? He went to the PUC, he went to the planning commission, planning department, he went to Helco, he goes to them, he makes meetings, he looks eye to eye, he says, and asks direct questions. He doesn't write letters and this and that, he does things eye to eye. Helco, everybody, nobody admitted anything. They instill the county council, you guys don't know about it, but I trust this man. It's there, they're doing it behind our backs, no public awareness, no media. Who's giving these permits? Is it the planning department? Is it Abicrombie, Governor Abicrombie? Is it Mayor Canoy? I haven't heard anything about it and that's decided, I don't trust them, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Councilmembers, we have about six or seven more testifiers. Do you need a break or do you want to continue on? Okay, okay, we're going to finish the testimony. Our next two testifiers here in Hilo is Joyce Valena and Gregory Todd Smith, both testifying on Bill 129, all in support. Good morning, Ms. Valena, how are you doing?
Good morning, Chairman Yoshimoto and all councilmembers. Once again, I see a councilmember, Brenda Ford, leading the pack, leading the council in producing this bill. I support Bill 129 absolutely. It's unthinkable to me that anyone, that anyone would allow or even think of allowing fracking on a volcanic island that is prone to earthquakes. We have the earth's most active volcano here in duration of time, if not velocity. Thank goodness, not velocity. It's been said many times before, fracking does increase the numbers and intensity of earthquakes. We don't have enough water to supply what the fracking has to use. And when you're talking about us here on the counties being a Maniti group or you guys are relatively Maniti group, I think you're a very large group. And when you, when you consider, so many countries have stopped hydraulic fracking and we're a county, I think we can do just as good as the rest of these counties, Argentina, Austria, Australia, Bulgaria, Canada, Czech Republic, France, Germany, Italy, Ireland, Netherlands, New South Wales, New Zealand, hey, hey, Romania, South Africa, Spain, Switzerland, and the United Kingdom. Good God, people, we need a unanimous yes for this Bill 129. I didn't sign up for Bill 64. May I speak for a few minutes?
Yes.
I'm in support of Bill 64. I'm sorry to see any trees having to be cut down, but I understand what the dangers of albizias are. It's kind of scary, you know, to be driving down the road with these huge albizias on both sides of you and it's windy and you're hoping, my God, I hope they don't fall on my car, off of my car. So reluctantly, I have to support that bill. I hope, I hope somebody can speak in favor of using the wood because it would be a really, a real shame just to waste all of that resource. It can be used. I'm not a wood person, my partner, Greg Smith, is, because he'd like to comment on it. So thank you again for the opportunity to stop disruption of our ecology again in this scenario. And remember something, please, all of you, money is necessary because it's a tool. But when you put money above public health and safety, you failed in your responsibilities, be you councilmembers, policemen, people on the street, businesspeople, industry, whatever. And I commend you for your abilities to realize that you have to succeed in your responsibilities to protect our public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valena. Okay, our next testifier is Gregory Todd Smith, Bill 129 also in support. Good morning, all.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, council. Yeah, 129 is excellent bill. Thank you for bringing it forward. I would like to comment again as well on 64, but getting back to 129. Bob Patrici pointed out that we really don't need this energy. That's been my stick before and why take the risk? When I, we bought our first solar system like 13 years ago, it was costing something like a dollar twenty-nine per watt, okay? Bob probably paid 55 cents per watt for his new system and we recently, in two years, we paid half of what we did 13 years ago to upgrade our system two years ago. As far as the people that are pushing geothermal and in this area, you know, it's stupid because it's not needed. People say, oh, we need baseline power. Well, you know, we, this island could easily be energy self-sufficient. Oh, about seven, about 60 years ago, this island was energy self-sufficient because the sugar companies provided 90% of the power of this island and guess what it was provided by? The burning of a byproduct of producing sugar, which is the gas, which is, as you know, the old manner of producing sugar was like mountains of what they considered waste. They didn't even, they didn't even want to put it back in the fields. They wanted to, they threw it in the ravines, they threw it in Gilo Bay, they tossed it over the cliffs because there was so much of it. In Brazil, for the past nearly 40 years, they have had a what they call cog generator sugar plants. And what they do is this doesn't just produce, these sugar plants in Brazil do not produce just sugar and molasses, they produce six, sometimes six different products from one feedstock. And the cultivation of the sugar is not done in the same way as it was done here. They don't harvest once a year and then pull the whole plant, plow it down the fields and rush the, you know, put the topsoil into the sea and kill reefs. No, it's a permacultural thing, believe it or not. In Brazil, for the past nearly forty years, they have had a, what they call cogenerative sugar plants. And what they do is, this doesn't just produce, these sugar plants in Brazil do not produce just sugar and molasses, they produce six, sometimes six different products from one feedstock. And the cultivation of the sugar is not done in the same way as it was done here. They don't harvest once a year and then pull the whole plant, plow it down the fields and rush the, you know, put the topsoil into the sea and kill reefs. No, it's a permacultural thing. Believe it or not, sugar is a perennial grass. They replant once every seven to ten years. They contour plows to make sure there is absolutely no runoff from the fields. Instead of losing topsoil in these operations, and this is a commodity operation, they actually gain topsoil up, you know, from one inch to two, up to three inches a year, per year, every, you know, every growth cycle, every harvest cycle. It's like cutting your grass. You harvest it, the grass grows stronger because you put the, and you don't truck your grass clippings to the dump, you put them on top as mulch. The grass actually grows. So the point is that we could have these cogenerative sugar plants. And the point is that they cost maybe thirty million dollars to make up one plant, not two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to put in one geothermal. The fact is, they produce electricity. And not only that, they produce fuel for autos, alcohol.
Sorry to interrupt you. So I think your three minutes are up on 129. You want to talk about 64 too?
64, yes, is excellent idea, and I'm glad it's a good tool. And plus the fact, I am a woodworker. And Albezia wood can be utilized. It could be utilized for, you know, interior paneling. It could be utilized, I know, as a boat builder for canoes, strip planking canoes, and even carving canoes. There's a bunch of people that are still carrying on the carve, you know, traditional carving Hawaiian vessels, using Albezia, because guess what? You can't afford Koa. Okay? And anyway, the, as a boatwood in Indonesia, and traditionally in the Philippines, it was an X, you know, it's a traditional boatwood, because it's cheap, it's available, it's lightweight, and, you know, even a carved hull without any protection whatsoever, paint can last ten years. And the wood itself, the material itself, is so abundant that it can actually, it's cheap, you know, it's cheap to carve a canoe every ten years. But anyway, it can be used and utilized as it should be. And, and if you can't utilize it for wood, you can ship every bit of the Albezia, and it's excellent mulch, by the way. So, you know, that's the point. Anyway, thank you ever so much. Please pass these two bills, aloha.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next two testifiers is Amara Karuna and Thomas Seaman, both are testifying in support Good morning, Ms. Karuna, you're first. Good morning.
Aloha, my name is Amara Karuna, and I'm testifying for myself. That's all right. And the Hawaii Sustainable Communities Alliance, there's about six other board members that are totally behind that, and we're working on creating legal structures for sustainable living in Hawaii. So I just wanted to point out that when fracking got started, it was seen as a way for America, for the United States to be free of foreign oil, because the United States as a whole has the same issue we do. We want to be free from dependence on energy from other places, right? So they made all these special exemptions for the fracking industry. So they don't have to follow the Clean Air Act or the Clean Water Acts, the water, they have special exemptions to that that got structured in, because they were rushing this through, like, "Oh, you guys get to do this, and then we'll have lots of cheap gas to fuel the United States." But actually, you know, that was the picture that they were going to do, but now what's actually happening is they're taking that gas that they're getting and they're selling it to China, right? Fracking our lands, selling it to other countries. So what makes you think they won't do something like that here, you know, or, you know, it's going to be exported, you know, we're wrecking our environment? So you can kind of see how they lay this groundwork and thinking, "Oh, it's going to be really good for us," and then it actually turns out to not be what they said it was going to be. Because you can't trust a corporation. Corporations don't have hearts. Only people have hearts. Corporations just want profit. And that usually means using up resources as fast as you can, and having as little regulation as possible so that you don't have to spend money. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you doing this bill. I also want to say that I really think it's important for the county councils, hopefully of other islands besides this one, to pass this, because then it will lay the groundwork for the bill that's going to be presented up the state level. There'd be more support. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Thomas Seaman, also testifying on Bill 129 in support. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity and for considering this bill. I think it's an important step in the right direction. I would go much farther myself, but I understand we can only go as far as we can each moment. I see this as a, one of the stepping stones in basically a culture war between corporations, which have only one motivation, and that is to create more money for themselves, and human sustainable aliveness, the ability of our environment to support us and to nurture us and to be part of us. I think most of the details have already been said, I don't need to rehash that. There are many other ways to create electricity, power, et cetera. Basically, I see this as a situation where capitalism was trying to eat democracy, and you're responding appropriately. I want to support this bill, and I thank you for doing it.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, our next two testifiers is Duran Vaughn and Judith Mora. If you please come to the table. Good morning, Mr. Vaughn. I'm not sure if I pronounced your name correctly. You can correct it. Whenever you're ready, good morning. Oh, try again.
Yeah, Miss, sorry, Vaughn. Can't hear me. Just speak right into the microphone. My name is Doran Vaughn, and I appreciate the, the fact that Brenda Ford has introduced this bill, and that the council is considering Bill 129. I'm here representing myself, and...
Is that on again?
I'm doing fine. Representing myself, although I'm sure that my partner would agree with everything that I have to say. I lived in Alaska twenty-nine years prior to moving to Hawaii, to Big Island, four years ago. We selected the Big Island because of the beauty of the island and the, the beauty of the people here. And we, of course, living in Alaska, were exposed to volcanoes, and we had no concern about the volcano. However, at this point in time, we do have concerns about the geological impact and the health impact of the proposed geothermal development, and today, for your, with your consideration, the issue of fracking. I, we purchased twenty acres in south of Koa for the purpose of developing our own farm to be able to provide food for family, friends, and neighbors. We live in an agricultural area. Many of the individuals who have spoken today live within close proximity to where we live. We all live off-grid. We are all working on developing agriculture here on the Big Island. And unfortunately, the, the drilling that is being proposed is literally in our backyard, five hundred feet away from our house. And this could have a major impact on us personally. But we also have concern about our neighbors, and we have neighbors next door who have two babies. We have neighbors across the road and down the road from us who have toddlers. These are the future generations. These are the people, these are the children who will be the adults making the decisions in the future. I intend to reman on the Big Island and to continue developing the property, hopefully without geothermal in my backyard, but want to preserve the environment, preserve the island for future generations. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I am glad to hear that there are individuals who are very well-educated. I'm, I'm learning as I go along, and they're very well-educated about the geological impact. And we definitely, we have heard about the effects on seismic activity since our, since we do live on it all the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier is Judith Mora, also testifying on Bill 129 in support.
Aloha, thank you, council members. My name is Judith Mora, in support of Bill 129. We love our island. We love our security, we love our peace, we love our beauty, we love the clean air that right now exists on our island. We want to keep it that way. I want to keep it that way. Don't you all want to keep it that way? Now, I was watching a PBS program regarding farming in Hawaii. There were about six farmers from around the island discussing farming in our islands, and they said that the reason we import ninety-five percent of the food that we consume here in Hawaii is because we don't have enough water. I was thinking, "Oh, that can't be the truth." But then you look at the grocery stores and the produce and everything, and you see that, "Hey, local, it's not written all over the walls there." So it is true. We don't have enough water to grow not even thirty percent of what we need here, especially in dry months, or not in dry months. So anyway, but we have millions of gallons. Because see, these other states, and these corporations know that we need to use millions of gallons, gallons of water to frac. We don't have it to grow even thirty percent of our food, but we got it to spill. Fracking? What kind of eco-friendly deal is this? Okay, so the corporations want, that want to bring fracking to our islands know that earthquakes, property damage, and being that we are so seismic here, it could be loss of life even, and loss of lifestyle. They know this very, very well. And I hope you guys are educated enough to really look to the state of Arkansas that banned fracking because of all the damages that they did there, Switzerland, who banned fracking, Colorado, Texas. So anyway, so in, it, it costs millions of dollars to deal with this problem. So this is not going to be cheap on a government level. You're going to spend a lot more money than you're going to bring in.
So much.
Okay. I don't want to become a statistic, or neither do my property in the destruction of fracking. Thank you very much. Fracking is terrible.
Okay, thank you for your testimony, aloha. Okay, that concludes the public testimony portion of our agenda. I'm going to be taking a ten-minute recess. Okay? Recession?
I'd like to yield to the panel.
Okay, Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Yes, and she's yielding to me so we can accommodate Senator Ruggent's schedule, and I have a couple of questions for him. And my main question as home rule, and just for the public, I just want to say what I mean when I say home rule, is that municipalities gain their authority either through the statutes or through constitution, where statute stays. Our home rule statute says basically, we have, or the key section, we have the authority to enact ordinances with respect to health, life, or well-being, and private property secure order. So I consider, in terms of fracking, this is very much a home, has this, a local issue protecting private property, protecting health and well-being of the people. And again, we're always balanced. Okay, I just want to explain why what home rule is so the public understands. I'm getting to my question, Ms. Ford. I have concerns about working with our state legislature in terms of home rule issues. And sort of where, I did go over and testify on this bill, and I was concerned about the county being left out in terms of issues having to do with, or the geothermal bills being left out, and it's sort of, we need to streamline, and streamlining for me was code, you know, cut out county input. So I just want to work a little bit stronger, build stronger connections to the state legislature, and how, for example, in this context, I assume maybe things will be coming up, how we work in a positive way with the state legislature, or what we as a council, and whether our concerns are justified. So if you could just comment on that issue and our role, or how we can best forward the interests of our constituencies.
Well, thank you, our council members. I appreciate these great questions. And I agree with you that this is an example of a home rule interest, that we have interests to protect here that are not perceived statewide, and there's no regulation on statewide. So I think it's an appropriate application of the home rule concept. Ways that you could affect, I mean, I think when the council has sent a resolution urging the state to do something, or a resolution in support of certain specific bills, which happened a couple of times last year, I believe, I think that carries a lot of weight. You know, I, I mean, if I'm trying to argue for a bill, and I have among the testimony, "Here's a resolution from the Hawaii County Council," that's, that's better than twenty letters from my friends and neighbors, or a hundred letters. It's a very powerful tool. So I think that's an effective way of voicing your interests. And whenever the other counties can't agree with it, then that's, that's all the better. I think it was a big deal when three of the counties urged passage of, what was it, a GMO labeling bill last year. It's true, not all four counties did it, and that wouldn't have changed the legal status, but I think it sends a really loud message, and it's a very effective message. I'm not sure what else we could do beyond that.
I guess, to the extent, sometimes I feel that we're, we don't hear about what's coming down or what is. I know anything in my system, like ag, water, energy, sustainability, I'd like, to the extent that you are able to, or your staff, let us know when there are things that you think would impact us, and that we could have, whether it's testimony or otherwise, have input.
Well, we could do that. If you or any, any of the, any interested members who want to contact my offices, I'm interested in bills on these subjects. I do have staff that can follow up to that extent and keep you informed. As you know, sometimes things come up fast, and as you know, sometimes they don't want you to know about it, so having that little trigger is very important.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I, last time, I have trouble with is sometimes I think they're mislabeled, and you would ever know that economic, economic development is equal to got the home rule statute, you know? So it's just hard with so many to follow what's going on.
It's a very good point, and it's, it points to one of the problems that I think we all are hoping to make better, but it's one of the problems that this is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Thank you, Ms. Rudden. Okay, Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Phil Honty for Corporation Council. And I move to amend. Bill 129, Rap 2, with the contents of Communication 421.76.
Second.
Thank you. All right. At the last meeting, we had many members of the public who were very concerned about the low amounts of fines. It made the cost of doing business very easy for them to violate the law. So Mr. Phil Honty and I sat down and went into the HRS. So, Mr. Phil Honte and I sat down and went into the HRS and pulled up water contamination bills, and that's where we got the new amount. So, as you can see, in Section B, we struck out the information about the fines there completely, and we improved the section on civil fines by upping it not to exceed $25,000 for each separate offense. And each day a violation persists constitutes a separate offense. So, if they did say three things on day one, and they, and we catch them, and it keeps going each day, so it would be $75,000 for every day, and they keep going. We're talking a lot of money. And then, of course, we can go into the rest of the bill. But Mr. Phil Honte is here to answer any questions, and I want to talk about very briefly kind of the sequence of events and how this would take place. First, they would get a notice of violation from the county, and then, second, there would be administrative enforcement. And Mr. Phil Honte, would you discuss the administrative enforcement a little bit?
Good morning, Chair, council members. William Brhanti, Deputy Corporation Counsel. Ms. Ford is correct in that at the hearing we had regarding this matter at the planning committee meeting, there were some questions and concerns raised regarding the maximum or minimum severity of both civil penalties and our penal penalties or criminal penalties associated with proposed ordinance or regulation from the county. Under that guise, I was requested to look into this matter by Ms. Ford, and we found some pertinent information, specifically as it relates to criminal penalties. Section 13-11 of the Hawaii County Charter establishes a ceiling or maximum for criminal penalties associated with a bill or an ordinance, and that's imprisonment of no more than one year, and an actual imposition of a criminal fine of not to exceed $1,000. As related to the civil penalties, there wasn't really anything specifically structured or specified in either the charter or economic code or, you know, case study. What I did uncover was the fact that, you know, you can impose a civil penalty, however the requirements for imposition of a civil penalty is that the penalty has to be reasonable, it can't be excessive, and there has to be sufficient notice to the alleged violator, and an opportunity for that person to have an administrative hearing, and that's pursuant to the HRS Section 91. So, as Ms. Ford correctly alluded to, is that the fact that if a complaint comes in, and under this proposed ordinance, the agency that the complaint will be received by is proposed to be the planning department, and justification, the reasoning behind that is because the current geothermal resource permit application process, as it stands right now, runs through, and by statute, which I stated earlier, you know, in previous discussions with you, runs through the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is overseen or is assisted by the Planning Department. And the Planning Department does have zoning inspectors currently in place, and those zoning inspectors pursuant to the authority of the director have the ability to issue notice of violation or citations to that effect. So, with that in mind, a complaint will come into the Planning Department, the Planning Department will then initiate an investigation regarding the complaint allegation with that, you know, illegal fracking is going on. As the bill states, although the geothermal permitting process runs through the Planning Commission, this bill is much broader than just geothermal activity. It's hydraulic fracking associated with water or mineral or the lava. And so, we're just trying to fit a proper course of action, which would be reasonable and easy to pursue as, you know, if this matter is established and placed on the books. So, that's how the Planning Department zoning inspectors would do it. So, the notice goes out. The notice warns the alleged violator that, you know, they have sufficient information that hydraulic fracturing may be taking place at a specific location, they're required to stop the activity, and they're also afforded an opportunity to remedy the activity. So, they have so many days to stop the activity, and then there's the notice of imposition of a fine, both a civil fine. Now, as it relates to the civil fine, that's where there's some bifurcation in the process, or just fines in general, there's some bifurcation in the process. The course of action for a civil fine is that the alleged violator gets the notice, they have 30 days to appeal the notice, and that goes to the Board of Appeals, and then they can have their agency hearing through the Board of Appeals and the various remedial remedies after that, the ability to appeal to circuit court. As with the opposed to imposition of a criminal fine, the criminal fine, the allegation will come forward from the planning department, and that information, that evidence that substantiates, whether or not it substantiates the alleged violation, is then forwarded to the prosecutor's office, and then the prosecutors will then make a case, or review the case, and they'll make a determination as to whether or not there's sufficient enough evidence to support the allegation going forward, and they will then proceed to take the criminal offense forward in the whatever court they feel is appropriate, and in this case, would probably be a district court action. So, I hope I didn't muddy up the waters any more than necessary.
The basic premise is that we have increased the fines that can be imposed by the county administration substantially to $25,000 for each separate action, and we wanted to make sure that was clarified. And then, we've also included, if you look in under civil fine, Section C, if you look at number, there's three sections, and I want to make it very clear. The first section is for the violator, is the $25,000 for each separate section. The second section, too, is for anybody who hampers our inspectors or the director from going in, they're subject personally to a $10,000 for each day they prohibit us from doing our jobs. So, you can have two different people. You could have the employees of the company who are doing the fracking, and you can also have somebody who's inhibiting our ability to get into the property to check it out during reasonable hours with, we've got to use good reason with this. Section three is the factors that the director would be looking at in assessing how much of a fine that they should be doing. For instance, how many separate violations are going on? Mr. Phil Honte, when this, if this were to go so far as to get to a court of law, would a judge look at these factors as well?
Basic question, as this matter were to be moved forward or challenged, would be whether or not the director's decision to impose a fine is arbitrary or capricious. And when you look at arbitrariness, you look at, you know, did the director have sufficient enough knowledge? Did he give sufficient enough consideration for the imposition of the fine? And I think when you look at items A to F, and you look at how detailed and how specific they are, as well as just what they specifically relate to, I think that's a, in my opinion, that this guideline would provide sufficient enough basis to make the director's decision to impose a fine defensible. And when we look at, you know, whether or not the fine came forward, it's just the imposition of the fine, is it defensible? And that's what would be there to determine.
But would a judge in a court also look at these?
Yeah, that'd be information that we could provide in defense of the imposition of the fine.
Thank you. Mr. Phil Honte, I want to thank you so much for all the work you've done with me in the last two weeks. It's, we've done a lot of work. I have analogized this thing, so, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Any other comments or discussions from council members on the amendment hearing or seeing? Now, Mr. Clerk, roll call on the amendments.
Ms. Yon.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegado.
Aye.
Mr. Canuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimoney.
Aye.
Chair Shimoney, you have seven ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The motion passes, so Bill 129 is amended. Go back to the main motion. This is still on first reading, so we have one more reading to go, Ms. Ford.
Thank you. You know, I'm sure all of us are receiving the same group emails from various people in the community and from outside the community regarding this bill. This is a preemptive bill. To the best of my knowledge, we are not doing, no one is doing fracking. But when I wrote this bill, and if you actually look at the bill itself on page four, number, the purpose statement under Section 22, I just want to read this one sentence. "This ordinance seeks to minimize public and private losses in the county of Hawaii due to the negative effects of hydraulic fracturing used in drilling operations, or exploration and production of water, gas, oil, or minerals, or the exploration or production of geothermal energy-related research, including geologic research." This is really not a bill necessarily about geothermal, because you heard testimony that from one of the people today that said in Wyoming they were doing fracking to get to what they call yellow-cake uranium. That's a mineral. That's a form of uranium. I've read in one magazine that there's someplace in the country that they wanted to start fracking for water. You know, I can't imagine, I just think that's dumb, but, okay, we'll go on from there. For those people who think that I don't understand that crude oil and natural gas are probably not on this island, I understand that this island geologically is far too young. You have to have tens of millions, hundreds of millions of years to develop shale and coal and things like that. I understand. So, I really don't need any more emails telling me how stupid I am, because we don't have gas and oil here, so therefore fracking will never take place. It's not about a particular industry. It's about fracking. That's what this is about. And I wrote this bill at the request of so many people in Puna, and I am one of the four people who represent portions of Puna. Mine is the third smallest group, but, as I've said before, this is going to happen in Kona. This is not just about Puna. This can happen in Kona. It can happen on the other islands, too. Maybe they have to go a little bit deeper to hit a heat source, but it could happen on the other islands. But if, you know, if anyone wants to do this on their island, that's their call. I'm not trying to impose something statewide. I'm saying here, there will be no fracking for any reason at any time here. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that clear, so I hopefully won't get any more natural gas and oil nasty grams, and we'll go forward from there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Willie?
I have a quick question for Mr. Brhanti. What about jurisdiction of OHA land or, so you say no fracking, and I'm just wondering in terms of jurisdiction, and is there any question? Do like the counties say so?
I was afraid that you were going to call me back up.
Well, I thought I'd give you an easy one.
Again, William Brhanti, Deputy Corporation Counsel. You know, that's, that question is, you know, somewhat loaded question, in that, you know, there are some issues regarding the county's ability to enforce its regulations on the Department of Hawaiian Homes lands, DHHL lands, and currently, there's a mutual agreement in place wherein DHHL and the county, a previous administration entered into agreement in that the county would enforce zoning regulations on DHHL land. As to the validity of that agreement, you know, I'm not in a, I haven't researched it enough to make a determination as to its legal effect, but I know there is currently an agreement between the two entities that zoning and the like can be enforced by the county on DHHL lands.
And you say zoning, I think this comes under general, I think I'm not sure this would be called a zoning rule. I forget exactly what paragraph it's under. So, because I know there is some geothermal exploration on some of OHA land, so, in your opinion, would you say that this fracking, no fracking applies for the entire island regardless of what yours, whether it's OHA or DHHL?
I would, in my opinion, I would say that I think the county would have a strong basis to enforce this provision of the ordinance on DHHL land based on historical precedent and the like. Is that opinion sufficiently, you know, a strong enough basis to say, yes, legally we can? I'm sorry, I just don't have that information from you to make that determination, but I'd say we have a strong basis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other?
Mr. Canuha. Just a point of clarification. I know she was asking about OHA land, and you kind of commented on DHHL land. I know where she was, where Ms. Willie was going about the Office of Hawaiian Affairs land, but you ended up going into the Department of Hawaiian Homes, so is any comment about Office of Hawaiian Affairs own land?
That I'm not able to comment on. I think Ms. Willie referenced both in her question. So, she referenced OHA, but then she said Department of Hawaiian, I mean, she said Hawaiian Homes land. So, and, you know, since that information regarding DHHL land was, you know, I have that information, I was representing. As far as OHA goes, you know, I would have to say that I don't have, again, I don't have that specific information in front of me to make a determination. You know, I'd be happy to look into it if you'd like.
I don't know whether Lincoln has more information on that.
I'm finished, by the way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Canuha.
Maybe I'll.
Okay, hold on one second, so, anyway, council members, you need to recognize before
we speak, but, no, 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 just remind you. So, Ms. Willie, you wanted the floor back?
Yes, that's okay. I just wondered if you had any further comments, whether it's OHA land or DHHL. I do know, I believe that OHA is doing some exploratory, or there is a field in that area on their land, and so I just wondered.
I don't know about the OHA lands, what you're referencing. With respect to DHHL, Mr. Phil Honte is correct that with respect to the present agreement, cooperative agreement that we have, that was penned in 2001, the current DHHL leadership and the county's leadership with which you are a part, we are strongly supportive and we are abiding by that. And I know that even with the change in DHHL leadership, they have indicated in all uncertain terms their desire to uphold their end of the deal. The memorandum of understanding between the county and DHHL is being amended presently. Mr. Masuda from our office is spearheading that effort. So, assuming this passes, and it seems like, you know, in all likelihood it will, we should be sure to make sure, that's good grammar. We should make sure that the concerns raised in this bill are made part of that MOA, and we'll be more than happy to do that. As always, Ms. Ford reminds me.
I have a follow-up question. I mean, are we as a council going to be participating or involved in any of those renegotiations?
Yes, what we can do is what we did in the past, and the original MOA was actually done when Harry Kim was mayor at the time. We brought it to the council for your information. I can't recall if it was after it was passed or before, but I sensed from your question that you would like to be notified before so you could provide input. I'll talk to Craig about that. We'll put something on the agenda with the chairman's permission, give you some lead time to, you know, maybe come up with some suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
You can do that.
So, it's really OHA, I think that's the one that's been involved in the geothermal, so.
Yeah, Brhanti's going to look into it.
Yeah, we're going to leave that to him. Okay. So, I really don't have a solid answer on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Any further comments? This is still on first reading, so there's time to pick up more answers. Okay, any other discussion around the main motion? If not, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Yon.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegado.
Aye.
Mr. Canuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimoney.
Aye.
Chair Shimoney, you have seven ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Bill 129, as amended, passes first reading, moves on to second reading.
And just a point of order, I know that Dave always gets me And just a point of order. I know that Dave always gets me if it has to say if there are no's or absences or whatever.
Oh, yeah, okay, so there's two excused. That's gonna go for the entire voting record today. So, Mr. Onishi and Ms. Poindexter are excused. Okay.
Just when you announce the seven ayes, that you say no's or not to excuse. Anyway, otherwise I get a text.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Okay, Mr. Kern?
Yeah, could we take Bill 64 out of order?
Okay, we'll take Bill 64 out of order, and then Bills 111 and 112. So Bill 64 is on second reading, right, Mr. Kern? Okay, Mr. Clerk, Bill 64.
Bill 64, draft two, amends Chapter 20, Article 2 of the Hawaii County Code 1983-2005 Edition as amended relating to clearing occupied and unoccupied lots. Amends Article 2 to provide property owners impacted by refuse, uncultivated, undergrowth, or unsafe floor that poses or is likely to pose an imminent danger of fire, health, safety, property damage, or crime hazard on an adjacent or abutting lot. Whether that lot is occupied or unoccupied, the opportunity to file a complaint with the Office of the Mayor requesting the offending lot to be cleared of said refuse, uncultivated, undergrowth, or unsafe floor. Reference Communication 246.17, introduced by Mr. Kern. First reading September 5, 2013. Postponed September 18, 2013. Note: There is a pending motion by Mr. Kern and duly seconded by Mr. Iligant to approve Bill 64, draft two.
Mr. Kern, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's already, there's a pending motion.
Thank you. With that, I move to amend Bill 64, draft two, with the contents of Communication 246.18.
Second.
Okay, second, but, no, go ahead, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. You know, just going through the bill, it's a very important bill, and I wanted to make sure that it was as comprehensive as it could be, and cured that out, there was no issues on it. In the conversation with the legal side, we came into one challenge that I think we identified and fixed. So, you'll see in the amendment on Section 20-23, there's some basic, just more housekeeping in Section A and B. And what it is, is that we're allowed to put a lien on unoccupied lots, which is the primary problem that we deal with. State law does not allow us to put a lien on an occupied lot. So what we did is we had to delineate those two, so now the unoccupied lots would be leamed. The occupied lot, if there was an issue with that, the Department of Public Works would make an outright direct recovery of expenses and basically contact the owner, ask them to fix their problem. If they don't fix their problem, the county will come in and take care of that problem and then bill the owner for that expense. If they refuse to pay, then we would basically file a lawsuit against them to collect that. So it does not take away any, any collection method. It also makes sense because it is an occupied lot, you know, they live there, it's a home. It's different than it would be if it were just a vacant lot and they lived in the mainland. I feel that this will, it's still gonna work, and it's the best that it possibly can be, and there's absolute relief that people are needing right now. And again, I think this also, with knowing that the county could come in, if the owner isn't willing to mitigate their own problem, that the county can come in, there are keep there, and they will have to pay for that. And I think that will also, again, it'll detour, or not detour, but it'll help a lot of people just to remedy the problem in the first place and not actually have to go through this process. And also, just, there's a hole you can breathe through, right? It's just all of the basic recording mechanisms, how we go through there, it's straightforward. And then also, too, we put Section E in there. Nothing in the section should be construed to create any liability to the county, creating damages incurred as a cause of action or inaction. So just make sure the county is covered. Again, it's the same, it's the same bill, just with that delineation that we have to, we had to work with. I think it's as strong as it can be, and there are many people that are awaiting some of this relief right now. And again, I believe it will, it'll cause people to take action on their own. It's gonna be the most cost-effective, easiest thing for them to do. And the folks that, that aren't doing that, there will be a way for somebody that has, you know, a serious problem to be able to get some relief. I look forward to, any comments about the House movement set?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kern. So there's a pending amendment. Ms. Willie?
Yes, thank you, and I want to say thank you to Councilmember Kern for addressing many of the issues that we raised. Checking on, including conforming to state statute and addressing that issue, addressing the collection issue, addressing a number of points that we all raised and let this move forward and put those in. The one question I had, and I had actually, oh, I guess Brandon is here, if I could call him forward, is just in terms of cost to the county, and no one from Public Works was here last time. And I said when we came forward, I'd like to just talk about cost to the county. So, Brandon, if you'd just like to introduce yourself, so...
Good morning, members of the council. Brandon Gonzalez, Deputy Director, Department of Public Works.
And my concern has to do with the cost to the county and that we're not, you know, rich in abundance of funds. And just knowing what it costs to cut down a tree, especially where it's, you're going to get around the concern falling on a house or on electric lines. And what if any concerns you have, or if suddenly we have many houses and people on the list, how we draw a line and say, I'm sorry, we're over budget? So I just want to explore the budget issue. And as we're all looking at, how do we deal with our limited funding?
Okay, thank you. So I think we're talking to the amendment in Communication 246.18.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide some input on this. I just received a copy of this this morning. Regarding costs, my office is still trying to compile that type of information. We have ballpark costs from fiscal year for how we currently handle tree removal, and it ranges from anywhere from $70,000 a year to $250,000 a year for tree removal.
I just wonder, like, on the, or per tree, or, you know, what, what happens when we get, there are 50 trees, or 150 of these trees, people coming in? You know, where, how are we handling that as a county?
Well, I know what the type of answer you hope to get, but I think my point is it's hard to quantify specifically. It costs $100 per tree.
Right.
Because each situation depends on a variable amount of circumstances. The terrain, what's in proximity, where it's located. And actually, for more of the complex jobs, or a majority of the jobs, we actually put out to bid
Right.
some of the work. So then it comes down to who is the lowest qualified and responsive bidder.
Right. I mean, just in my experience, it could be $1,000, or it could be $25,000 for a tree.
Correct.
So I'm just looking at, how do we monitor? And how do we deal with that in terms of at what point, how much money are we giving each year such that someone like me or Councilmember Poindexter, that's very concerned about roads in Limbo and the rest of your budget, that you're not coming in here and saying, we can't fix something? How do we balance that? I mean, how do you see, how do you feel okay in terms of, maybe we just monitor it and keep looking, see if we need an amendment going forward? But we weren't able to address this in the earlier times.
Well, I think it goes to the bigger policy question that you, as the policymakers, have to decide is, at what point are you folks comfortable in regulating something that heretofore has been primarily a private matter that has been resolved between private property owners? Right now, the law is structured where we can address conditions along our roadways, where we can address conditions on unoccupied lots, basically the vacant landowners. And now, are we gonna expand that service? And it is a county service. It is gonna be something we have to pay for because in a lot of the cases, we're not gonna get the money upfront. So we're gonna be expending and hoping we can recoup what we expend. The practical reality of it is, like with many government fees, you don't always recoup all of your costs. It's a small fraction, right? And that's the trade-off with government. You're trying to provide a service, a good service to the public, that isn't cost prohibitive to the public. So those are all very good questions and concerns. And I think if you look at the Department of Public Works' overall budget, if it comes to addressing these matters for occupied lots, then you would definitely have to factor it in to our costs. And if we only have, say, $10 million a year to do highways maintenance or roadside maintenance, we may have to move things in the buckets that might mean less resurfacing. It might mean longer schedules on our drainage maintenance for our waterways. Everything would have to be prioritized by federal mandate and then other requirements that we have. But that's part of the budgeting process as a department that we would have to factor in. I would like to point out, though, that for some of the things that may have to be cleared from an occupied lot if this is passed, it's not only gonna be Public Works that might be affected. Because currently, to remove abandoned vehicles, as the Department of Environmental Management has a program for that, to address, you know, appliances that are just dumped along the side of the road, that's not Public Works. But there are programs in other departments that have to address that type of thing, so...
I have concern for your question and how we handle this, where we haven't, you know, I'm not sure there's anything. Can I ask Councilmember Kern? Is there a way, do you feel that we can monitor this if there's suddenly, what the cost is? Or how do you envision that?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, and I do think it needs to be monitored. I think it is hard to quantify what that's gonna be by at this particular moment. I think it's necessary, though. What I would say that we do is pass the bill, and six months' time, have Brandon come back. And we can see what the complaints have been, what ones have actually been substantiated, what they have done. And that way, we can actually try to get a metric on this. Okay, it's something like X amount per year, which equals this. It might take us X amount of time to recover this expense. Because that's the thing, like, it is, as Brandon said, we don't recover every single penny, but we're gonna recover the vast majority of it through the lien or through litigation. And so that's what I would do. And if at that time, we see, okay, this is a bit much, then we could put in a amendment to cap it, to just have a threshold every year, say, whatever that number would be that we can see. But until then, I think it's almost premature, but I'm open and would be willing to even draft that, you know, when that, when that time comes, if we see the need for that.
Right, that was exactly what I was thinking. Let's sort of monitor for six months. Because I, I think, just my experience as a lawyer, it's, you don't necessarily get the vast amount. You know, I, I'm not quite as optimistic as you are in that regard. And I do see there seems to be a great deal of interest. My one other thing that I'd like to pursue in this six months is see if we can possibly put out to bid more as a program-wide. In other words, where the, this, these trees are very valuable in terms of green waste and composting. I think they're nutrient-rich. There's a lot of, you know, I actually, I think they're beautiful trees. I mean, I look at them, they're beautiful, and for compost or woodwork. I think that perhaps we could really look into that and see if there are those that if we said on this year, we've got this many applications, and what will you bid to come in and take all of those trees and be using them for compost or green waste? So I'd like to explore sort of a proactive, sort of, whether it's energy, using them for biofuels or using them for green waste, and try to combine that. But I am, you know, are, the roads in my area are, there's a lot of needy roads. And, you know, I'm trying to hold on to where we have those funds. So, thank you, and I will be, would like to sort of put this on a six-months marker. And Brandon, as he are looking at it, really keep a sharp eye in terms of the fiscal responsibility and in terms of, I really didn't like the idea, well, we can just cut them and leave them in place, and let's try to utilize this. This is very valuable. This is a natural resource, and I don't want it to be, get that value get lost in the shuffle here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. We're still on the amendment. Any further comments, council members? Oh, yeah, that's right, Mr. Iligant, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deputy Director Gonzalez, I want to ask you, how long, there is already a existing program where you can go into unoccupied lots. How long has that program been started or running?
Thank you, Councilmember Iligant, for the question. As best as I can tell, at least from 1975, when this provisions for handling unoccupied, clearing unoccupied lots was put into the county code.
Now, how much did your department allocate to take care of this program?
That's the figures I do not have at this point because when it comes to highways maintenance, we haven't extracted that from our records yet.
So you can't even make an estimate right, right now?
No, I wouldn't be able to, sorry.
And it is not even fair to say if it's over $500,000 or under $250,000? Or it's not even fair to say that?
When you're looking at the Public Works budget from highways, for highway fund, being a multimillion-dollar fund that's responsible for all matters relating to highway maintenance, so that's road resurfacing, vegetative control, flood control management. Portions of it are also used for mass transit. A large portion of our money is spent on highway maintenance, as a long term, and we're talking millions, so... Islandwide.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is if we, this has been going on since 1975, and you have the expenses already on what you spend on unoccupied lots. If we could get that number annually, we have a ballpark number of how much it costs for unoccupied lots. Now, adding this additional service, then we know that it's gonna be more than what the estimate is. If we could, if we were to, let's say, I'm just giving a fictional number, it's not, it's not true. Let's say for this program, it costs $100,000 annually. And because we're adding this additional service, and like I said, these numbers are not true. Let's say it's gonna cost a total of $250,000. Now, just giving that up, we can cap it to where $250,000. And then that way, if we budgeted that in that matter, we don't have to tap into any road paving or road maintenance that's deeply needed also. And it won't get to a point where when we're experimenting, we have to tap into road maintenance funds that we rather not do. So if we keep it, if we do establish that annual amount, I think we can set a good cap that will make sure this program does happen at the same time it doesn't hurt the other programs in your department. And I'm not sure how this council feels, but I would be interested in getting that annual amount. And then with that, adding additional service, because this is going into... because this is going into occupied lots. And you know it's going to be costing more. So either just double that annual amount or triple it, depending on how the council feels, then setting that cap there. So that way, we won't get unexpected results where at the end of, let's say, six months or a year, it's five times as much. But it's dependent on this council. And I just want to make sure that was brought up. I am more in favor, more in favor in trying to get how much it costs annually and then figure an out the cap from there. Thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? We're still on the amendment. Ms. Ford.
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I'd like to make a couple of comments. Sorry, the whole council is in here, but we do have two excused, they are excused councilmembers. I really like Margaret's idea of a potential source of revenue production to cover some of the costs. I realize it'll go into the general fund. But if we could sell any of these trees for woodworking, paneling, all of those different types of things, that would help relieve some of the pressure, not all of it. It's never going to be all of it. The other thing is that if it was chipped, you might get local farmers who would be willing to take the chips. Excuse me. Provided it doesn't have any koki frogs or stinging male cow bellies or all those other lover creatures. The one thing I am really concerned about is something I heard today in the public testimony from Kuna. And that is apparently these trees are lining some of the major public roads. Is that correct? Okay. So I would like to get from the Department of Public Works some type of a estimate, guesstimate, on getting the trees that are lining our major public roads in Kuna. Get rid of them, get them down. What is it going to cost in that six-month period of time? Is it possible to take them down? Because these trees are obviously so dangerous. You have to look at, what is the value of a human life if these trees fall? I mean, we've got the testimony from the Big Island Basin Species Council with just a few of those stories of the problems we're having. And so I'm really concerned about those roads in Kuna, the major roads in Kuna with these things on it. Because there's just way too many people in Jeju, as one of the testifiers said, every day that they drive past those trees. So a public work, I'm interested in you guys giving us your best guesstimate of removing the trees along the major public roads first. If, especially if they're, I don't care whether they're occupied or not, they need to come down. So I would like you to bring back some information. Say, is one month, two months a reasonable period of time?
Well, I'd like to, thank you for the suggestion. I'd like to make it clear for the council and the public that the public works, this program or this legislation isn't kicking off a new effort by public works to maintain trees along the roadways. It's ongoing. So when we're talking about trees within the right-of-way, there are other provisions of the code that we have to follow. And so that portions of the code, we have to take into account keeping the right-of-way clear of encroachments. But there's also a balancing in that provision where the actual clearcutting of trees is in question. Because we're told that we can clear up to 15 feet. So that's a balancing, saying for some of the vegetation along the side of the road, which might make sense because it stabilizes the size of roads we shouldn't be cutting. So along with that, some of the roadways in the Kuna district as well are not under the control of the county, but with the state. And so we are always working with the state to identify priority areas for roadside maintenance and tree maintenance. And I think, you know, the state has been stepping up its efforts in doing vegetative maintenance. We've seen it as evidenced in law, in East Hawaii, right by the airport, across from Ken's Pancake House, they started clearing. I know in West Hawaii a few months ago, which it created some concern with the public. They started clearing some of the overhanging trees that was dropping vegetation rotting onto the road. So we are continually looking to do that. And I think also in the Kuna area, thanks to the efforts of Senator Rutterman, he, and in partnership with DLNR and the Department of Ag, we are actually looking to participate in a pilot program for albizia control. And they have identified some areas of infestation of albizia that they want to target. And based on the results from there, there's a lot of private roadways that they are working with. But we are looking at trying to clear areas along government thoroughfares. So a month might be premature because the pilot program is, I think, the implementation of that is a little bit further out than a month. But it's ongoing.
I appreciate you letting us know the information. Because that's, for me, that's new information. But, and I, if you're telling me a month is too soon, I totally accept that. I'm more concerned about the paved roads that are major roads in Kuna, because we don't have a whole bunch of those. I'm concerned of just getting some kind of a guesstimate. It's not that we're going to take care of them all within six months, because it's not going to be possible. I understand that. But would a resolution to the state legislature regarding this pilot program or remark, commenting or asking them to maybe put a few funds aside? You know, I know we're not going to get much, but if they could fund something to help us remove the albizia trees along the state right-of-way as well? Because in my district, District Six, state highway starts at Hukokeh and goes all the way over to Hilo. So I don't know, you know, I don't think I've got the problem that you've got over in Kuna. Thank you. But I definitely think that, you know, we need to be working collaborator, that word, with the state. And if it takes maybe a resolution coming from the council, maybe one of us could be able to do that.
That's a nice suggestion. I think my point was the state has been working with the county. And the current collaboration and coordination going on looks positive for us. So I think we're good on that. I think the other thing I wanted to point out was annually, we do a solicitation for tree trimming. And basically, the county, and recently partnered with Parks and Rec, identifies locations where professional tree trimming is required or desired. And we identify locations and prioritize them. Also annually, that's where we have been taking care of that. And it ranges in $70,000 a year, depending on the amount of sites and amount of trees and the bids, to $200,000 a year. So that's the type of information that we have. But when we're talking about the highway maintenance information, all of that, the labor costs, the salary and wages of the workers going out there, it's hard to extract that going back.
Okay, council members, I'm going to wrap this up. Ms. Willie, final comment? We're still on the amendment.
Okay. And yes, this is on the issues of collection and just my concern in terms of the budget and where we came out. And I was thinking along the same lines of Councilmember Iligun, how do we cap? Or then I thought maybe we ought to move this to starting next budget cycle as we've done, you know, like the bus or, one tree could cost the $20,000, all of the hearings that we had on GMO, you know, where it can be very expensive. I wondered if we could do it, and even under the way the bill's written now, sort of have people submit applications. And then after a certain point, you review those applications and look at the most.
Ms. Willie, we're actually beyond the scope of the amendment.
Oh, we're beyond the scope of the amendment. Okay, I get, have trouble figuring out between which is on the amendment and which is not. I think the one thing, in case Brandon leaves, I want to bring up, just in terms of these trees that we are aware that oftentimes, say, albizia and eucalyptus and ones that absorb a lot of water are actually planted, were planted along the roads because they prevent erosion and flooding and drainage. So sometimes it may be, we don't cut them down, we prune them. But just sort of, let's get them all out of there where they're actually put in for a certain function. And how does one balance those different issues? So I'll hold whatever else I have for the bill and not on the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Kern, on amendment, any final comments? If not, Mr. Clerk, the vote on the amendment.
Ms. Yehaw?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligun?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura, you have seven ayes and two excused.
Okay, thank you. The amendment passes. Per our council rules, this is automatically held over unless there's a motion to, I make the motion to suspend our council rules. You don't have to hold it over.
Second.
Okay.
How much notice on the amendment did people have?
Mr., any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules, council members? It's, no discussion on the, Ms. Willie? Right, because this is on the second and final reading. So the concern always is.
Okay, so just run through the, make sure I know what I'm doing.
Okay. Okay. Staff's telling me that the motion to suspend the rules is a non-debatable motion. The motion right now, the purpose is to suspend the rules so that we could pass Bill 64 as amended on second and final reading. You know, the, just for the public's information, the council members' information, this has been amended. The question is whether the public would have had enough notice.
Well, we just received.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, so it's non-debatable.
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so Bill 64 as amended is held over to the next council meeting. Mr. Clerk, if you can take Bill 111?
Bill 111, amends Chapter 25-8-3, North Kona Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, zoning code of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural 5 acres A-5A to family agricultural 2 acres FA-2A at Maui 2, North Kona, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 7-9-003, Portion 033. Applicant Harold Tishima, approximately 2 acres. The applicant requests a change of zone for a 2-acre portion of a 7.662-acre parcel of land, which is jointly owned by various members of the Tishima family in order to subdivide the property into two parcels for estate planning and real property purposes. Reference Communication 391, introduced by Mr. Kern. First reading, September 18, 2013.
Mr. Clerk, to approve Bill 111.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kanua. Any discussion, council members, hearing or seeing? Not Mr. Kern.
Ms. Yehaw?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligun?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura, you have seven ayes and two excused.
Thank you. Bill 111 passes second and final reading. 112, please.
Bill 112, amends Section 25-8-11, La La Milo Pu'u Kapu Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, zoning code of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural 5 acres A-5A to family agricultural 2 acres FA-2A at Pu'u Kapu Homestead 2, South Kahala, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 6-4-018087. Applicant Douglas and Ruth Dick, approximately 5.001 acres. The applicant requests a change of zone to subdivide the property into two lots, approximately 2 acres each. The applicant plans to convey the lots to each of their two children, one of whom intends to live on the property with her family. Reference Communication 392, introduced by Mr. Kern. First reading, September 18, 2013.
Mr. Kern, thank you. Move to approve Bill 112.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Willie. Any discussion, Ms. Willie?
Yeah, I have discussion. I just want to bring up a couple red flags that this, looking forward of issues that are here. In the South Kahala, CDP talks about sense of place and important ag land. And if you were to look at the map that says Waimea Town Conceptual Plan, you'll see that this specific area is small farms and ranches, preservation program. And the objective there was to not cut back from the, not retain the zoning of 5, 10, 20, and 40 acres in those areas. The exception was affordable housing for small-scale subdivision for families such as continuing ag, which is what this would fall under. And so I am supportive of it. I do know of other situations where it's sort of transferred to the kids and then they change their mind and it's sold the next year. I know of other municipalities where they do lock in. If you are going to do something, get an exception and undermine what is, here was a key principle of preservation of we have very little ag land. And this is right in the heart of Waimea where it's important and designated to preserve. I'm thinking perhaps of doing some kind of amendment that if you're going to do that, then the family member retains it for five years. There's some kind of restrictions where it's not just turn around and change their mind. I think the one other area I just want to bring up, and I am supporting this, but I just want everyone to be aware, is that in terms of, say, access, here ordinarily, our law, our rules are, they would have to have a 50-foot right-of-way and 20-foot paved. In this case, it's 40 feet with just a gravel road except for the very beginning. And the Waimea Town plan did suggest, okay, let's not allow for any more ohana houses. So there's a limitation. But I do find each time often, we take that general rule and for low-volume use, road use, we then allow an exception. I am thinking of doing something where if it is a low volume, that should be the rule and not where we're constantly accepting it. Whereas if somebody goes in and calls, what are the requirements? Oh, you have to have 50 feet and 20 foot paved. And they don't even go forward. So I just want to raise a couple of issues that I have relevant to this type of a zoning. So I'm, I yield, and I am supporting it. I just want the all to be aware of some of the balancing that's going on here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Any further discussion, hearing or seeing? Not Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Yehaw?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligun?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura?
Aye.
Chair Yoshimura, you have seven ayes and two excused.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Bill 112 passes on second and final reading. Okay, why don't we, let's see, take it from the top of the calendar, Mr. Clerk, on Communication 441?
Communication 441, request to hire special counsel for the County of Hawaii in the matter of pending bankruptcy proceedings involving Hawaii Outdoor Tours, Inc. from Corporation Counsel Lincoln S.T. Ashida, dated September 28, 2013. Requesting the counsel to authorize the hiring of a special counsel to assist Corporation Counsel attorneys in the legal matters relating to the pending bankruptcy proceedings involving Hawaii Outdoor Tours, Inc. for a contract total of $25,000. Note, requires 2/3 vote of the entire membership to authorize the appointment of a special counsel pursuant to Section 6-5.5 Hawaii County Charter. Note, under the topic fitting of referrals for executive services. Note, under the topic fitting of referrals for executive session on this agenda, Communication 441 has been listed in anticipation that the council may convene an executive session on this matter.
Okay, may I have a motion to file Communication 441?
Second.
Uh, I think that was made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kanuha. Okay, good afternoon. Good morning, Mr. Ashida.
Good morning, members of the council. Thank you for agendizing this matter and for hearing and for hearing from our office today. I don't have anything to add to the letter I sent out. I'm here really to answer your questions, address any concerns you have. Hawaii Outdoor Tours, when people hear that, they don't immediately think of, this is about the Nani Loa bankruptcy. The actual lease between the resort owner and, is between them and the state of Hawaii. The county is not a party to that particular bankruptcy. However, we have a, I think, an overriding significant interest in ensuring future prudent development of that area. I was chatting with some folks a few days ago and, you know, that Benyon Drive area in Hilo, at least for the people on the east-west side, those of us born and raised here, it's a very iconic area. It's an area that, you know, we're always very proud of. I was married at the Nani Loa, you know? And I think that our county has made clear that we need to do a little more to ensure that that area moving forward will be developed prudently and appropriately. What we also found out is commercial bankruptcies are a completely different animal from individual bankruptcies. We, early on, were involved in some of the work monitoring the bankruptcy proceedings, filing documents as necessary. However, we soon became aware that we needed somebody on the ground on Oahu, somebody to monitor, because we're not a party to the hearings, we don't get noticed up in time for us to make the hearings. So to have somebody on the ground there, and more importantly, someone who just knows what they're doing in large-scale commercial bankruptcies. Do you believe that we found the, a law firm who is willing to provide that service? I respectfully, humbly, am urging this council to approve our request. If you approve the request, two things to keep in mind. Number one, the next step is for me to negotiate a contract with this law firm on Oahu. But second, I want to point out, just so we're all clear at the get-go, $25,000 is probably enough to just get us started. Okay? In other words, I probably, in all likelihood, will be coming back asking for an enlargement of the contract as necessary. But if and when that happens, as I always do in these cases, I'll make sure that the billing is submitted to the council for your review ahead of time. So with that, I'm more than happy answering the questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ashida. I see Mr. Kanuha's, like, before we get too far into the discussion, is, this is also agendaized for executive session, so I just want to make sure, council members, is there any request to go into executive session? Because if not, I'm just, I'm fine with it remaining an open session. Just want to make sure no one has that concern, so. Okay, on that issue, whether we need to go to executive session, Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I do, not this minute.
Okay.
I would like to see this table to the end and go into executive session because I have some questions that need to be, I think, need to be in executive session. But I do have a question after everyone else finishes that can be asked in open session.
Okay, so, Mr. Ashida, any problem in us doing some of it in open session and some in executive?
No, no problems at all. I don't know, Ms. Ford, if I may address Ms. Ford to expedite things. You can ask my question or you don't even feel like asking the question in open?
First of all, I don't have anything from you, so... All I have is what's on the agenda. I don't have any information. I have one page saying that you want to talk to us about this. I don't have anything else. So, I need to get a copy of whatever it is you sent.
I think that's it. There's no back...
All right, for me, it's not enough, so we need to talk. But I don't want to interrupt the rest of the questions, so I'm going to wait for my turn.
Okay, so unless I hear a motion to go into executive session, we're going to continue in open session. Mr. Kanuha, I think you have the floor first.
No, I mean, I understand what Mr. Ashida said and, but the only, we're going to try to release, the council's going to vote to try to release $25,000. And, you know, personally for me, I just need to read a lot more before I could figure out whether I would vote to release those funds. So, that was just the point I wanted to make in the beginning. I don't know what kind of questions I really have, that's why. So, that's why it's hard to ask a question and get an answer.
If I may respond, and I accept responsibility for that. I just assume that, you know, this had played out pretty publicly in the media. This is a situation where Hawaii Outdoor Tours is a company that owns a long-term lease as a hotelier doing business at the Nani Loa Hotel in the Benyon Drive area. He is, hotelier is in default of his lease payment obligations to the state with respect to the county's interest in that. Again, I believe this played out publicly. Our fire department and our Department of Public Works have both gone in to issue notices of violation, both structural as well as fire violations relating to their kitchen area as well as an outdoor kitchen that he had, without anyone's knowledge, had just directed. So, that's sort of our angle into this case, is again, we're not a party to the bankruptcy case, so, you know, it's not like I could provide you any court documents. But the public health and safety angle, I shouldn't call it an angle, interest is something that we are looking at as our opportunity and frankly, our responsibility to become involved in this case. And if and when that happens, we need special counsel, we need attorneys who know what they're doing. Really, if I were to distill, if I were to give you paperwork, it would just distill down to those facts that I just recited to you right now. That in a nutshell is really what it's all about.
Yeah, personally for myself, I'm extremely happy that the county's taken this position. I mean, we do have an interest. There is a safety issue with this and we need to do something. I mean, it's the, we've already seen for the longest time, the state isn't doing anything. So us as a county, I am glad that you guys are actually taking that initiative to do something about this. So, I'm, I'll just give it to the rest of the council, but I mean, that's my position and I'm in favor definitely of this. And, I mean, more information, of course, is good for us to read and to make a decision, but I mean, based off of what you've been saying, I'll be in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kanuha. Council members, I'm going to be taking a break in about three minutes for lunch. So, Ms. Willie, did you want to ask your question now or after lunch?
I'm happy to wait till after lunch, either way.
Yeah, because we're going to go anyway, yeah, okay. Well, Ms. Ford has her, okay.
I was trying to... Okay, so I didn't even realize this was the Nani Loa from looking at Hawaii Outdoor Tourism. I didn't put that together, so I'm just taking it in. I just wonder, we're not intervening in this, if we've got such a great interest, why wouldn't we be front and center intervening?
That is exactly what we are attempting to posture ourselves to do by getting special counsel onboard for that purpose. That will be one of our potential pleadings, yes.
So, in my mind, I mean, I would love for us to just be piggybacking on the state, but my sense is that we have some adverse interest to the state and therefore we need to be posturing ourselves somewhat independently from the state?
I believe that there is a, we are potentially adverse with respect to the interests of the state. You know, we are at ground zero with respect to what occurs and what doesn't occur in that Benyon Drive area. So, and also, I just wanted to point out, we are not, this is not a situation where we are farming the entire case out to special counsel and saying, go get them. You know, we, this is a co-counsel situation where our attorneys will still be involved in the case. Basically, we just need to bring an expert onboard who works in this area, does this all the time, knows what they're doing, who can best protect the county's interests. That's the bottom line, you know, it's, especially for the veteran council members who are here. When we ask, part, you know, it's, what I've come to understand and know and feel as a court counsel is sometimes I just have to ask, I just have to say, look, this is stuff that we don't have the expertise for. Not be ashamed to ask and make that request because it's that important to protect the county.
So, this law firm will be working more like consultants, so making sure we don't botch something up or we're pursuing whatever their options are?
Yes, yes. But also, they, you know, they, you know, they're really good. They're actually, they knew that it wouldn't be until October 2nd that we could potentially get approval from the council. So they have been willing to, and they have been providing us pro bono assistance in the interim time.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, why don't we, thank you, Ms. Willie. Why don't we take recess? We'll be back in one...
Ms. Chair, before you, may I just ask the council members, what documentation, if any, would you like for me to bring out? I'll go get it right now, whatever you need to see. But really, because we're not a party, we don't have, you know, any, any deal we have filed on behalf of the County of Hawaii. And again, really what's out there is what's been in the media. And now this is just, it's early on and it's our effort to just step in and get involved in the case to protect the, assert and protect the county's, the county's interests.
Okay.
You have some questions?
At least upon that, okay.
Just asking a question?
Well, because I guess, because we have some time during lunch, but if Mr. Ashida asks what other information you need, because the majority of it, all of it has been, you know, publicized through the media. So, Ms. Ford, you haven't talked it, on that specific point, go ahead.
On that specific point, do you have anything written that would be like a summary of what's been in the newspaper? Because that's come over weeks and or months and so, I'm not sure that I have a complete memory of the sequence of events other than I know that it's going on. The other thing that I would like to see after lunch, and it may have to be taken care of in executive session, is on what, I really don't understand on what grounds we have an interest when we have an adverse interest to the state or not a party, how are we going to go about doing that?
I can answer that right now, our police power interest. And that has to do with public health and safety, things that are enforced by our building department, things that are enforced by our fire department.
Okay, but if we are, I want to wait till after lunch.
Sure, that's fine.
All righty, thank you.
I'll get what I can.
Okay, we'll be in recess till 1:30.